Four. Okay. I'm gonna, I wanna wait till it gets a little quiet because we're about to introduce some students. So. Okay, so folks, folks, we have called the meeting to order and we are about to announce, we're about to introduce some students, so could we have quiet, please? Thank you.
Good evening, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Sean Galvin, who's the principal of Lincoln Elementary. Sean started working in the Janesville School District in 2010. He has been working hard to innovate and create learning opportunities that are on the leading edge of education change. He has lived in the state line area his entire life and is passionate about providing a great education for all children. Dr. Galvin's professional background varies but has always been in the elementary setting. He has been in education since 1999 and he has taught third, fourth, fifth grades, as well as being an elementary assistant principal. Sean has taught both in a small 1,000-student district and also in a large 30,000-plus student district. He's also served for seven years as a camp director on a nonprofit day camp that provided a free camp experience for at-risk students. Sean has an associate's degree from Rock Valley College, a bachelor's degree from Rockford College, a master's degree in curriculum and instruction, a master's degree in education leadership, both from National Lewis University, and most recently, a doctorate in the education of Edgewood College. More importantly, Sean wants to get to know all the Lincoln School community and be able to serve their needs. His goal is to build upon all the great things happening at Lincoln and to make it a positive year of growth for staff and students. Sean, who do you have with you tonight?
I have Lily Thurner and Marquise Lage, and they are great fifth-grade students that always embody responsible, respectful behavior and are great leaders in our fifth grade. And both of them are actually running for student council board memberships. Both are running for president, so.
Awesome, thank you for being here. Great job, and good luck.
Okay. So, welcome, welcome. Our first order of business is to adopt the November 9th Board of Education Agenda.
So moved.
Okay, as Commissioner Audrey and Commissioner Mallard. All in figures, if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Boy, it's just my night, isn't it?
It is.
And I'll tell you, some days I can't lose. When the weather turns, oh, this is, um, autumn safety tips. When the weather turns cold, most people spend more time inside their homes using fireplaces, furnaces, and heaters to keep warm. There's nothing quite as cozy as a fire, but, a fire, there we go. But it presents some safety hazards. Keep these tips in mind. Service your furnace before the cold autumn and winter weather sets in. Be sure to call your heating and cooling company to have your furnace checked. Use fireplace safety. Keep the fire in its proper place by using a fireplace screen and to keep sparks from flying out of the fireplace. Using caution with space heaters, a space heater can be as an effective way to warm up chilly rooms, but it's essential that you read the instructions on the unit before you use it. If your space heater requires venting, make sure you have it vented to the outdoors. Never use your stove or oven to heat your home. Only use space heaters that are approved for this purpose. Reconsidering leaf burning, this is something I didn't know. According to the information from the Environmental Protection Agency, burning leaves produces dangerous and cancer-causing chemicals. For this reason, homeowners should avoid disposing of leaves this way. If you decide to burn leaves, wear a protective mask. Burning leaves should only be attempted far away from a house or other structures on a homeowner's property. Exercise candle caution. Candles are a great way to give a room that warm glow, but they can also cause fires. According to the National Candle Association, almost 10,000 home fires start with improper candle use. Kevin hit on this before, changing your smoke detectors. Change the batteries in your smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors when you turn back the clocks for daylight savings time. Make sure to check the alarm with the new batteries installed. I think that's pretty good, I'll just stop right there.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Mallard, thank you very much. Okay, so let's now hear from our student presenters. First, we have Charlotte Mark from Craig High School. Welcome, Charlotte.
Hello, members of the school board. My name is Charlotte Mark, and I am the school board representative for Craig High School. To begin, the first quarter of the school year has ended and grades are expected to be released soon. Girls hockey, boys hockey, gymnastics, and girls basketball all began practicing this week. Boys basketball, swim, and wrestling will begin their seasons next week. Speaking of sports, senior Riley Coleman was accompanied by members of the varsity cross-country team as she competed at the state competition in Wisconsin Rapids. Riley qualified after placing seventh at sectionals and was one of the top 100 runners at the state level. Junior swimmers Ally Donigan and Dakota Reese also qualified for state for girls swim. It's the second time each of them will be competing at state and their competition will take place next week in Waukesha. Some of our student clubs have wasted no time in getting activities and volunteer opportunities up and running. The Interact Club collected hygiene products for Project 1649. The donated supplies were placed in shoeboxes decorated with a Halloween theme prior to distribution. Key Club organized a trash cleanup opportunity where students stayed after school and picked up litter in both of Craig's parking lots. DECA participated in Tricker Can, first by having its members market the event and then by picking up the canned goods and other donated items from participating houses. Looking forward, on Friday, November 17th, Link Crew members will be giving school tours to the current eighth graders. As a current member of Link Crew, I'm excited to help them make their first step into their transition to high school. On Friday, November 19th, Tall Cap, or Jermaine Galloway, will be presenting a drug trend seminar in the Craig Auditorium. Galloway is a nationally-recognized speaker, and the goal of the seminar is to educate area professionals on current drug trends, especially in the youth community. Although held at Craig, this conference will benefit the entire community. Craig Administration is also gearing up for Bags of Hope, which is a holiday food drive that will take place in December. They will, they have started fundraising as well as recruiting volunteers. Subject selection for the next school year is right around the corner, as well as Craig's annual Martin Luther King Commemoration Assembly, which will be held in January. To conclude, I would like to take a moment to say thank you to our staff and teachers for their flexibility and hard work during the temporary internet outage we experienced. They still managed to stick to their lesson plans and made sure students learned their course materials. Of course, thank you to the school board, as I look forward to presenting to you all again soon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, from Parker High School, we have Addison Riley, and is it Line?
Lean.
Lean, I apologize.
No, you're welcome.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, my name is Addison Riley Lean, I'm a sophomore at Parker High School. I play on Parker's JV volleyball team, I'm a member of Parker's Science National Honor Society, FCCLA, Student Leadership Council, as well as DECA. Seven Janesville students from Parker High School and Joseph A. Craig High School were selected by a rigorous audition process to participate in the 2021 Wisconsin School Music Association High School Honors Project Choirs at the Overture Center for the Arts. On October 28th, statewide, 59 students were selected for the Treble Choir and 98 students were selected for the Mix Choir. The WSMA State Honors Music Project offers the experience of a lifetime creating friendships, memories, and skills students take with them in whatever path they choose. Staff included are Matt Knudsen, the choir director at Parker High School, and Jan Knudsen, the director for the Parker Arts Academy. Student participants were Craig High School student Abby Young for the Treble Choir and Parker High School students Madison Leader for the Mix Choir, Eva Schroeder for the Treble Choir, Audrey O'Leary for the Mix Choir, Kendra Wilf for the Mix Choir, Leelaw Howard for the Treble Choir, Faith Green, excuse me, for the Treble Choir, and Melina Williams for the Mix Choir. Congratulations to all of them. The Parker DECA chapter, led by the DECA officers, excuse me, and the barn managers, collected 1,403 pounds of non-perishable food items on Sunday, October 31st. The non-perishable food items were donated to Echo to help people in the Janesville community during the upcoming holiday season. This is the sixth annual Tricker Can Event held by Parker DECA, which is a statewide initiative by the Department of Public Instruction, Wisconsin DECA. In robotics news, Parker hosted a first LEGO League Mini Regional on Saturday. The Mini Regional gave all of our Janesville teams a chance to learn from each other with respect to their project and robot designs. The team practiced using their core values, which are discovery, to explore new skills and ideas, innovation, use creativity and persistence to solve problems, impact, apply what we learned to improve our world, inclusion, to respect each other and embrace our differences, teamwork, to know that we are stronger when we work together, and fun, we enjoy and celebrate what we do. Parker will be hosting a first LEGO League Regional on Saturday, November 12th. Twenty-four LEGO teams from all over the southern part of Wisconsin will be coming to Parker on the 20th to compete for a spot to move into sectionals. Parker and Craig will be competing at the Milwaukee School of Engineering Programming Competition on Friday, November 19th. Teams from Illinois and Wisconsin will be represented at the event. Parker French teacher Andrea Benn would like you to know that November 3rd through 9th is National French Week and Parker students are celebrating November 8th through 12th. By taking part in a scavenger hunt around the school, creating positive rock art, playing francophone games, and participating in a national trivia contest. Bonsoir, mes français, excuse my French, actually. Hopefully, you were able to see the Parker Arts Academy's production of Clue last month. Your next opportunity to see this wonderful, talented cast is in their production of White Christmas, running on select dates from December 3rd to December 12th. White Christmas the Musical is truly a holiday card come to life and is full of dazzling dance numbers and festive songs. Tickets are on sale now, if you're like me, love Christmas, I'll be going to that for sure. And finally, November is National Youth Homeless Awareness Month. Parker High School will be using a three-pronged approach to National Youth Homeless Awareness Month to educate staff and students of the reality of youth homelessness in our community. The first is reality. They will hear the voices of Parker students talking about their experiences with homelessness. The second is how we react. What do staff do when they learn of a student's homelessness? What resources are available and how do they work? And the third is action, opportunities to participate in small events that have a huge impact on our homeless youth. These included wearing green on November 19th, excuse me, donations for a miracle minute, and a school-wide food drive. That's all I have for you guys today, thank you so much, and I look forward to presenting you guys soon.
Thank you very much, I look forward to seeing you again. All right, thank you. So next on our agenda, just, we have some recognition here for one of our board members. So, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards is yet another, sort of a level of governance and oversight. And Commissioner Dahmershausen has been an incredibly active member of WASPA and has worked with WASPA in a variety of ways. He's great about, he attends meetings and obviously conventions and conferences, and he is incredibly informed always of the structure of the whole school board structure and, you know, statewide, and how it all fits together, and, and has done work on a variety of committees and that kind of thing, so. So, and it's, and your participation is rated, and your recognition comes, thank you, through a point system. And Commissioner Dahmershausen has reached a Level 5, which is pretty impressive as far as achievement is concerned. And so, I, we have a plaque here for you, Commissioner Dahmershausen, and just let me tell you that not only do I appreciate your service to us here, you know, but that this represents in part, but I want to thank you for all of your over and above service to education here and across the state through your participation in WASPA. So, thank you very much.
See, I'd just like to mention, I wanted to thank Tina Johnson, Director Tina Johnson, for helping us with our safety messages a lot of the time, so thank you, Tina.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, so, next we have citizen comments. I'm going to read a statement first, and then we'll begin, it looks like we have a few. Okay, so, "Welcome to all of those who have signed up to speak tonight, to the board tonight. We value your input and interest in our community. Accordingly, through school board policy PO 0167.3, titled Public Comment, at school board meetings, the board allows citizens an opportunity to express interest in and concerns for the schools during this citizen comments portion of school board meetings. We would also like to remind you that school board meetings are for the purpose of carrying out the business of the district. They are not public meetings, but official business meetings held in public. To ensure that board meetings are conducted in an orderly and productive manner, all public comments, no matter the topic, are subject to the following regulations. Number one is time limit. Speakers will be given one three-minute opportunity to address the board. This time limit will be enforced. If a speaker continues past the expiration time, the board, school board president or district official will ask the speaker to stop and to leave the podium. Per board policy PO 0167.3 adopted on March 9th, 2021, the portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited to speak shall be limited to 30 minutes unless extended by the presiding officer. Number two, conduct. Speakers must conduct themselves with respect and civility toward others. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. No person may address or question board members individually. Prohibited conduct includes conduct which is disruptive to the meeting, interferes with the ability of others to observe the meeting or to speak to the board, or interferes with the ability of the board to conduct business. This includes conduct which is abusive, harassing, or threatening, and conduct which includes the use of vulgarities or profanities. If a speaker violates this rule, we may prohibit the speaker from further comment at the meeting. Number three, topics for discussion. Speakers may not comment on confidential personnel disputes, share grievances involving school, individual school employees that do not implicate issues of public concern, or share individual student disciplinary matters, as there are other channels available that provide for consideration and disposition of such matters. Number four, board response. Pursuant to the Wisconsin's Open Meetings Law, board members are prohibited from responding to public comments unless the topic was identified on the public posting of the board agenda. Number five, recess adjourn. In the event that an individual's conduct causes a disruption to the board meeting and the board cannot continue its business, the gavel may be used to declare a recess or to adjourn the meeting. In addition, if such conduct constitutes a threat to the health or safety of another individual or individuals at the meeting, law enforcement may be contacted to restore order and safety." Thank you very much. Okay, so I have a, I have about, I think, six public comments. The first one I have is Colton, and I think it's Measner? Thank you, I think I got it wrong last time, so. All right, thank you.
One second, I'm pulling it up on my phone. All right. "Hello, all board members, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Again, my name is Colton Measner, I'm a junior at Craig High. I want to start off by saying I believe everyone has a say and has rights in this country. I believe that's the point of, that's the part of the American way. Right now, other than the form that was sent out about masks before the school year, students haven't had a say. Staff and parents received a survey that concluded over half, half wanted masks optional, but you still mandated them. Therefore, the only people that have had a say about masks from that point up are the board members. I believe that we, as students, had, have had our rights taken away, and in America, that shouldn't happen. I would like to do another survey where it involves the students. I would like for someone to help me understand why when students and staff attend events like homecoming or a regional volleyball game, no one was told to wear a mask, but when there, when there are hundreds of people all together cheering really loud. But when we come back to school sitting at a desk three feet, three to six feet from anyone else, we do have to wear a mask. I'd like you to consider making masks optional at the high school level. The reason I ask you to consider allowing high school to be optional is that everyone at the high school, staff and students who work with health professionals or parents and want the vaccine or could have the vaccine have had many months to get it. Not to mention, we have had five active cases between both high schools and the district. Also, if we did, did masks optional at high school, we could then see after winter break how things stand in the county and then see if middle or elementary school could be optional as well. It is hypocri, it is hypocritical that you can take off your mask when you are participating in sports before and after school, but you have to wear it during school where you are more socially distant, distanced. That doesn't make much sense to me. Also, we can take off our mask during lunch, where we're all together and most of the kids walk through the lunch line without a mask on. I'm sure, if you're honest, you have all been to a banquet, fundraiser, restaurant, church, store, concert, or a sporting event without a mask. So how is it you go against parents and staff in the survey we took about masks? That's just not the job of the board. The hypocrisy that the board members who vote pro-mask don't have to wear a mask is unreal. Let's be real for a minute, we have all seen the pictures of you board members without a mask on, which is fine because that is your choice, but we want our choice back. We saw the picture of Superintendent Puffall and the vice president of the board without a mask inside the district building minutes before a board meeting. They are both pro-mask. I want you to think about this for a minute. In what world is it okay for people to vote yes on a mandate, but then they don't follow it? I really want you to think about it and think about this mask mandate. Do you want this to be our new normal? We have had, we have the statistics showing students aren't transmitting at high levels. Hospitalizations or deaths have significantly declined, and there are mental and physical concerns rising in students due to masking. We know what's right from wrong, it is now on you to make the choice for us. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Colton, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Next is Matthew Herman. Oh, you know what, I think I forgot to ask Colton what his address is.
It's 2234 North Huron Drive.
There we go, thank you, sorry about that. Okay, and now I have Mr. Herman? Matthew Herman? Mr. Herman, would you state your address, please, your name and address?
Herman, 4344 Edgewood Court, Janesville 53545.
Thank you.
I came in to talk about parents' rights. Two weeks ago, myself and my wife brought in five documents that we had presented to every single person on the board and the superintendent. That was intended for every single one of you to get back to us on, okay? This is all we got back, not even a paragraph from the superintendent saying denied all four of the documents we gave. We gave five, so that means you're admitting to one, and I'd like to know which one you're admitting to. Also, that means the rest of you didn't do your homework, so that makes you complicit in saying that you're admitting to everything. Now, we were also there the night the photograph was shot, showing the two people in the building, not wearing their masks, sitting right on top of each other. Very hypocritical. And what went to the Janesville Gazette about that was they felt comfortable because they were both vaccinated and thought it was okay. You're breaking your own rules, and you expect our children to follow your rules. As I said again, our children are not your pawns. It's us to be parents and teach them right and wrong, but if you're not setting up a good environment for them at school, if they find out that you're breaking your own rules, how do you expect them to follow you? Really, how, how do you expect they're gonna react? Like I said, I would really like to hear from the school district which one of these they're admitting to. I would think it's the one, demand for cessation of unlawful coercion and unlicensed medical practice. Because in here, it's stating that in your mask metric, the only way we can take masks off is if they get a vaccine. So you're coercing the children and their parents to give the vaccine, and that's not right. There are certain people that can't get the vaccine. So, with that all said, I feel comfortable not wearing a mask. Some of you don't feel comfortable wearing a mask, we've seen many of you out in public not wearing a mask. So I am going to leave the building maskless because it's okay for you, it's okay for you to not wear a mask, think about it.
Okay, thank you. Dave Growth, David Growth, there you are. Mr. Growth, would you state your address too, please?
Good evening. Dave Growth, 920 Columbia Drive, here in Janesville. I'm here to ask the, the board to keep the current certified staff retirement options that are up for discussion tonight. The, the board often asks what they can do for teachers that has very little or no cost, and I think this would fall under that, under those guidelines. Currently, windows for retirement for certified staff, which is teachers and a, and a few other groups. The retirement windows, the first one is first sem, end of first semester, and the second one is the end, is the end of the school year, end of second semester. Retirement in the district, currently, you are eligible for insurance benefits and/or some of your sick days converted to an IRA or able to buy insurance with that. So, it can be a significant, significant amount of money at that point. Staff must also turn 55-years-old by July 1st and put in notice of retirement for first semester by November 1st, which is around three months before the end of the semester, or if they are gonna retire at the end of the school year, by February 1st, which is five months or so before the end of that time. Year-round staff that teach in the district year-round only have to give a couple weeks' notice to keep their retirement benefits. If someone, a teacher were to want to retire under these new rules and miss the February 1st deadline, say they, they decided to retire somewhere in March or April, they could be waiting almost a year and a half to be able to retire because they would miss the February 1st deadline, then they would have to wait to the end of that school year, then wait till the next year's February 1st and put it in to retire at the end of the next year. I feel that that's, that's just a, that's way too much to ask for teachers that are wanting to retire and to keep their district benefits. Reasoning by the district is surrounding trying to replace teachers at semester on the list. I think tonight that was part of the consent agenda that was perhaps three teachers that were part of that retirement list. I'm actually one of those three that's gonna be able to do this this year. And, uh, semester college graduates are graduating in, in December here. And so there should be some good quality candidates that are out there to replace the three or so teachers that are, that are going this year. Before Act Ten, um, it's, it's, I remember coming into the district and positions like social studies and kindergarten or elementary ed teachers could have three hundred applicants for a job. And now we're having trouble finding any applicants at all. And things that continue to be taken away from uh, teachers such as a possible change here, I think, don't make it more attractive for people to come into or stay into the profession. So again, I'm asking you to consider keeping the current, uh, retirement options open, uh, for teachers. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, and next on my list is Heather Miller. Ms. Miller, would you please state your address?
Hi there, Heather Miller, twenty twenty-three Joliet Street. I'm here because I've been asking questions for weeks now in regards to lockers at the middle and high schools. Now that we have cold weather approaching, kids are wearing their hoodies, coats, soon-to-be gloves, hats, and the like. Once it snows, though, kids are expected not to wear boots or heavy winter coats because there's nowhere to keep them. You, the board, has decided that middle schoolers and high schoolers don't need to wear them because you've disallowed locker usage for our kids to secure their belongings in. First it was basking, while some, while some have to, or some have to while others don't. I guess it depends on the circumstances. You know what I was told at Edison? That kids can keep their coats in their homeroom for the day, each and every day, pile them in the back of the room. I'm sure nobody will mess with them. Are you kidding me? Is this really happening in our public schools? There's nobody to monitor these belongings throughout the day, and let's not think for a minute that the chance of spreading bedbugs, fleas, roaches, lice, that that doesn't exist because as a mom of five, of six kids that went through the school system, it exists. And I don't want my kid's coat laying in a pile of coats that I don't know what happens in their, in their homes. Let's talk about after-school sports. Now that we have the ability to compete in athletics, we have disallowed kids to use locker room lockers. I have a swimmer. Literally a swimmer bathing in chlorine every day. But they have to carry their backpack, a textbook or two, a laptop, a lunch, refillable water bottle, hoodie or coat, and now we have to add a swim bag with towels and all your swim gear. Let's haul that place to place. It's too much, and you, the school board, has decided that that is okay. Right now, my son has permission to keep his athletic bag in the principal's office because the only other option was to throw it on a table in the corner of the office with the rest of the school bags. That's not okay. We've gone but way beyond the boundaries of protection from COVID nineteen, and this has simply become a nuisance and a means to control and overextend the power of a school board. The close contact prevention doesn't apply because kids are together in meal lines, passing periods before and after school. This reasoning can't last forever. I have three outstanding calls right now, two to HR and one to Student Services at this very building. None of them have been returned. Nobody wants to answer or provide reasoning. And I'm wondering if the goal of this district is to make it as miserable for parents and kids as possible, so that we don't come here. Because if that's the goal, it's working.
Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, next on my list is Shannon Zimmerman. Hi, would you wear your mask, please? Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Right, I'm sure this is gonna save everybody from COVID. So this is scarier than the first time I karaokeed. I'm not a comedian. Um, I come from a long line of constitutionalists. Right, and one of them is the First Amendment. Of course, I hope everybody here knows that, especially on the school board. And what is happening right now in our country is, is this, is this good enough? Right, it keeps slipping off my, maybe I should have a bigger nose. So what is happening right now to our country is so atrocious that they are actually forcing vaccinations in this mask mandate, which not, makes no sense whatsoever. And everybody here knows it. Everybody. And I'm gonna make this very short, but if we do not stand up for our country, we are gonna be the next Nazi Germany. Okay, because we're that close. Papers, papers, right? FEMA camps? Auschwitz? This is happening, and we have got to fix it. And do not force our children to wear masks. This is ridiculous. I mean, every time I go into a gas station, I see that Plexiglas thing. I'm like, why don't you put up two Plexiglas's? Right? Maybe that'll keep us from getting the COVID. No, it's ridiculous. The whole thing is ridiculous. So, with that, I go away now.
Uh, Ms. Zimmerman, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask you for your address. Would you please state your address for the record?
Five, three, five, four, five.
That's your zip code?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And your, your street address, please?
I'd rather not.
I have to for the record?
Why? What if I feel, what if I feel like in danger? Does that matter to anybody?
Yeah, you are televised.
Awesome.
So-
Well, that's why I don't wanna stamp my entire address.
Guess it just doesn't go into the record? Okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, next on our list, uh, is Tammy Goldstein.
Miss Goldstein, would you pull up- Tammy Goldstein, ten thirteen North Osborne Avenue, Janesville, Wisconsin. I learned a lot about the district lately. I heard from a number of students at the high schools this week about what's really going on inside. Like anything in respect to George Floyd or BLM is welcomed and accepted in the school. But this ban saying mask choice is considered contraband and confiscated. Look at that censorship. The students and parents are afraid to stand up because of the district's long reputation for retaliation against anyone going against the school narrative. Last school board meeting, we learned that the mass survey that, like the mass survey, the district website with the mass policy is just for show. Though the policy clearly states mask exemptions for those with a disability, police officers stood over a woman with severe asthma to make sure she kept her mask on. I'm being discriminated as well. I can't breathe with this on, but doesn't seem to matter. I didn't know I had to bring my medical records. We haven't talked about education because no one at the meeting mentioned that the two point six billion in COVID relief Wisconsin got for education. And that, according to the Wisconsin Assessment Test, our English scores are down twenty-eight percent and our math scores are down thirty-two percent. We were all critical race theory. Oh yeah, that's right, you call it, um, social emotional learning. It's still the Nazi playbook impitting one race against the other, one group against the other, mask versus unmasked, vaccinated versus unvaccinated, rules for the government in charge versus the people and parental rights. Through social media, community activities, being in the right place at the right time, what we've seen from the school district, uh, decision-makers, you make the rules, but the rules don't apply to you. Whether you're singing karaoke at a crowded bar, crowded bar, unmasked, attending a Maroon five concert, unmasked, and whose Twitter account want, um, says they're making critical race theory their life's goal, and who is blatantly sitting inside the district office, unmasked. The word here is hypocrisy. You just gave the middle finger to every parent in the district who is upset because your power-hungry policy has endangered their child's health, usurped their parental rights, while you are unmasked. I cannot believe that you thought giving your personal medical information was good justification. I remember when this school board had to pay a million-dollar settlement when the district informed the community that a Washington elementary school teacher who passed out on a field trip was drunk. That cost the district one million dollars for breaking HIPAA privacy laws. We don't care what your personal medical information is. It doesn't give you the right to dictate. But now it opens the district up to two potential million-dollar lawsuits. If you're not retiring, you should resign. COVID has a ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent survival rate. There is no COVID shot that FDA, that is FDA-approved. And I don't like saying this any more than you'll like hearing it, but you all had a choice. Other districts went mask choice, and there were no vaccine clinics. The school district of Janesville has used censorship, faulty PCR tests, bacteria muzzles, and served up our children for human experiments. Anxiety, depression, autoimmune diseases, Guillain-Barre, neurological damage, paralysis, blood clots, myocarditis, heart attacks, strokes, infertility, and death, and we haven't seen the last of it now that we're vaccinating the younger and younger kids.
Ms. Goldstein, you are thirty seconds over, so would you please wrap up?
When you look in the mirror, the eyes looking back at you allow these atrocities to be perpetuated against the children in our community. That's your legacy.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, moving on, we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Go move. So move, wait, are you seconding Commissioner?
No.
Domershausen, okay, I did the, request for motion, so I have Commissioner Harvey and then Commissioner Murray. Okay, um, so, is there
I have a question, and I apologize for this. I really wanted to pull one part out.
Okay.
In that, uh, not for anything negative. And that, and that's two point three.
Two point three? Resignations and retirements?
Yes.
Okay, so are you, are you friendly over there? Okay, good. Okay, so, um, all in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of two point three, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, to two point three, Commissioner Domershausen, you wanna, go ahead.
I will, I will right away say I want to approve two point three. With that, and then I want to second.
Okay.
I'm having a hard time with all my stuff. Thank you very much.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Domershausen and second, Commissioner Harvey.
Right. My, my whole purpose of this is that I wanna recognize these people. I'm not sure how they are, but they've been very outstanding teachers in our school district. The one, the least is twenty-six point five years. And that, one is an elementary, one is a high school, and another high school. And I know some of these personally and that, and they've just been outstanding in that. So I would like to just recognize those a little bit higher than just on a consent agenda and thank them for all the work that they have done over that many years to our district. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Domershausen. I, I think that, um, we all feel the same way. Thank you. Okay, all in, uh, favor of approving two point three, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Okay, here we go. Limited health insurance. Ms. Johnson, thank you.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. It's nice to see you all this evening. I am here, um, on the series of two different things. The first one here this evening is in regard to licensed sub-teacher, um, a health insurance proposal for those, um, individuals. Um, we did meet for the benefits meeting last Thursday. It was about a two-hour and twenty-minute meeting, um, an hour of which was spent in this conversation alone. A lot of really great questions, really great information shared out, and everybody came, um, together on it. Yes, as is detailed in the memo sent out. Um, you'll notice that we, we obviously have a shortage of substitute teachers. And one of the issues that we have right now is they're capped at ten days for retirees and fourteen days for, um, non-retirees in the school district. We have roughly one hundred and twenty-three substitute teachers in our pool. Seventy percent of those one twenty-three reach the cap every month. I did research that for you, so you knew that that was at. A third of these, of these substitutes are retired teachers of the school district of Janesville, most of whom are on our health benefit already. Now, you might ask yourself, it, why are we, why are we bringing this proposal forward? Well, due to the ACA, we have to cap them at ten and fourteen days because of health insurance reasons. If they work over a certain amount of hours, then we have to offer them coverage. So we took a look at the number of people that we have, how often people are out, what our fill rates are, which I will tell you, the fill rates right now, we are needing between thirty-five and seventy substitute teachers on any given day. And the average daily fill rate currently is sixty to seventy-five percent, which means that an average of ten to twenty-five substitute vacancies are open per day. Ultimately, what that means is that our staff are taking their time. Let's say I'm a music teacher at the high school level. I have third hour as a prep period. That's my time to prepare for my next classes. But our science teacher is out for the day. And we don't have a substitute teacher for that science teacher that day. As a music teacher, the third hour, I can go teach that science, science class for them. And, and oftentimes, that's what we're seeing, and it's back-to-back teaching for most of our staff in most of our buildings. So in an effort to try to help those individuals out, we thought, what happens if we offer them a limited-term health benefit plan? So in working with Cottingham and Butler, we created a plan. Um, it's a single plan, um, that is a fifty-fifty split on the premium share. So it's a single health coverage. If an employee wants to have an employee spouse or an employee child or a family plan, they are certainly welcome to sign up for that through the offer of coverage. Uh, but they would have to pay the difference. What the district is doing is creating a separate class. They have the same exact choices, the same exact plan design as all of our active employees. But they, their premium per month would be two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and five cents, and the district would pay the other two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and five cents. Ultimately, what this does is it eliminates that cap for coverage, and, and we are prepared to put this into motion immediately tomorrow. Um, we've worked to create all of the documents and get everything ready, all the communication out there. Um, all we need is the approval from the board, um, regarding that. Any questions?
Maybe this was already covered, but did you survey your substitute pool to see if this was a benefit that would make them work beyond the ten days, or how did you come up with this solution?
Sure, we're unable to talk about offers of coverage or health benefits at all. What we did instead was an internal analysis of the one hundred and twenty-three. And we know that, if I pull my numbers up here, but we know that a good portion of them, we have sixty-nine who are under, under our knowledge. We don't know if they're covered under our health benefits or have health benefits otherwise, but we knew, we do know age groups. So fifty-five to sixty-five would be Medicare-eligible, or, or sixty-five and older would be Medicare-eligible. Um, we do have some younger kids that are under twenty-six, so there's possibility of them being on their parents' insurance still. So based on all of those pieces, we felt that we were in a good position to offer this coverage. We can't, we can't go out, that was part of our, yep, Steve was gonna- But we can't go out and just ask that question because then it, that, it's like an offer of coverage, and if we're not gonna offer it, then it, it leaves us liable.
The point of this proposal is to lift the cap. So we're putting a, we're putting a plan in place that we suspect, frankly, not very many people will take advantage of, so it's really not about trying to extend a new benefit. It's just that we have to do that to get the ten and fourteen-day caps off of our existing staff so they can work up to twenty or twenty-two days a month, whatever the number of school days are in that, in that month. And this is a, so this is really a workaround for that, so. Um, and, and I, and we, I'm out in buildings, and I have subs say to me all the time, I wanna work more, can't you get rid of the caps? I, I hear that. And, and then now they can work every day of the, of the, of the school year.
I, I think it's important to say it, because I asked you this at the committee meeting, that if they have a, a single parent with a child or just a spouse, all the avenues are open, but all we're gonna subsidize is the two hundred- are open, but all we're going to subsidize is the $258. So they're open to anything they want to go ahead with, and that's out of their pocket. But it's offering it and it does lift our cap.
Any other questions or comments? I don't think I have a motion yet to accept. I keep forgetting to turn.
On my microphone, so there it goes.
Second?
Okay. I got it in stereo. So I heard it from Commissioner Murray and then my second from Commissioner Paul. Okay. Any further questions or comments? Okay. Are we thinking that we need a roll call vote on this? Probably not. We're probably pretty good. Okay. All right, all in favor then signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation on the resource adoption of a six-year, a six-year cycle. Ms. Graff. Dr. DeGraff, I beg your pardon.
All right, well, good evening. Tonight, I want to share with you a little bit about some information on moving towards a consistent resource adoption cycle in our district. And I want to start with a little bit different approach as I talk about looking at implementing a more consistent resource adoption process. I want to start by talking a little bit about our state accountability report cards that are going to be released on November 16th. And I want to look at what is involved in a state accountability report card. And when we look at the student, when we look at our state report cards, it's part of the Wisconsin Student Assessment System. And on the Wisconsin Student Assessment System, we use the Forward Assessment, the Forward State Assessment for grades three through eight and 10 in social studies and the ACT. So those data pieces are what drive our state accountability report, report card, along with a few other also components. And so the reason I wanted to talk about that a little bit is because in our Wisconsin State Assessment System, it's designed to gauge how well our students do measured against the standards. So we understand how well they will know and be able to do the standards that we are instructing on through our instructional resources. So as we look at our state assessment results, we want to look at how the state assessment aligns to our state standards. And then we want to look at how do our resources that we're using in the classroom align to the standards that are, that our students are assessed on, and how do we prepare them for that? So as we look at the recent district assessments that were released, we have assessments that provide us data on ELA, which is our English Language Arts or Reading. We have assessments in math, science, and social studies, and our ACT. In the recent release of our assessment data, we found that in our ELA, math, science, and social studies, at elementary, we were at or above the state average in all of those assessments on the forward exam. And in science and social studies, which happens in fourth and eighth, we were above the state average. And in social studies in four, eight, and 10, we were above the state average. So when we look at ACT, that's where we were slightly below the state average in all of those categories on the ACT. So as we look at that Wisconsin Student Assessment System and how we're measuring our students on what they'll know and be able to do in relationship to the Wisconsin academic standards, this is an, this is our current reading results that were released. And so you can see that we were at or above the state standard in grades three through eight. When you think about that, so to give perspective, and you think about 42% or even 36% in the state, you know, that seems, you know, 42% of our kids are proficient, that doesn't seem, you know, we, we definitely want to strive to be higher than 42% or 36%. When, to give perspective, so if I look at what's one of the highest performing districts in the state, I would look at Whitefish Bay. So in Janesville, we have 52% of our students that are in poverty, and we're performing at about 42% of our students that are proficient. Whitefish Bay has 1.5% students in poverty, and they have about a 70%. So really, the highest score in the state, it's not really that 100% up to that 100-point scale. 70 is around the highest in the state. So we want to grow and get closer to that, but that's kind of the perspective of what, what we need to achieve to move forward with. Again, in our math results, what our data was telling us is that our students performed above the state average in grades three, four, and five. We shared with you as a board an implementation of a new math curriculum at elementary. And what's interesting is the last state assessment that we received, results received, we were below the state average in third, fourth, and fifth in math. So not only were we below, but now we've gone above the state average with the implementation of a new resource that's well aligned to our standards. We also can say that we start to see a decline at middle school. So as we use these results, these results are, are one point in time for our students, but we do use multiple measures to continue to determine how our students are doing in relationship to the standards, as well as we use this assessment and other assessments in that school improvement planning process. So as part of that school improvement planning process, we can kind of see where some of those areas of growth are, looking at this data. So this just indicates our science results above the state average and our social studies results. As we mentioned with ACT, we are below the state average, so another area where we want to continue to look at some growth and determine, you know, where are some of those areas we need to target and focus on for school improvement. So as we think about, so that Wisconsin Student Assessment System and those state accountability report cards that will be released, what does that involve? So the last state accountability report card that was released was in 2018 and 19 due to the pandemic and COVID. So this will be the first report card released since then. So, and right on the report card, you can see the sign that has the warning that says, please use caution interpreting these results. Because we know what's happened over the last year and a half has not been what it's like in a typical school year. So that's a caution that's out there for all districts in the state. They also had to bring in a new skip growth calculation, so which is very different than what we've used in the past. So typically, we measure what's our student growth from third to fourth and fourth to fifth. Because we've been missing a year and a half of assessments, they had to change that formula for skip growth. So if a student that was a fourth grader at Kennedy in 2018, 19, and now would be a sixth grader, they have to look at their growth over from fourth to sixth grade. And then in their formula, they've said 50% of your score is going to go to Kennedy and 50% is going to go to Marshall. Because they had to determine a way to figure out growth different than what they had in the past. So that's another reason they have to use caution with interpreting these results. We know that our results are telling us that elementary is showing some growth in some of the specific areas we targeted in math. We know that we saw a decline in some of our secondary results. We also know that our students only attended on an AB schedule last year. We can't cover the same curriculum and content in half the time. And so as a result, we did see that, that impacted our student growth on those assessments. We do, one thing, just to recognize in our school district that, that we were able to do with more, we were more intentional as we took the state assessment system, is that all students were required last year, they wanted you to assess all students. So we had about 30% of our students last year that were either virtual or, or in a homeschool situation. And so we had to, and our, our staff and all of our schools worked extremely hard. We tried to bring every single student into the building, so they were testing them during the day and at night because they had to be on site to take the Wisconsin Student Assessment System. So our district had about a 96% participation rate, and the state average was about 84%. So in comparison to the state, we significantly brought in a lot more students. Now, some of those students were in a learning environment that they were probably, you know, an instructional model that they were not as used to in a typical school setting. So many of those students that assessed is probably a truer picture of where our students were at than maybe some other districts because all of our stu, as many of the students as possible were assessed. So when we look at growth, what are we looking at on the state assessment? There's four components. And those four components include student achievement, student growth, target groups, and on track to graduation post-secondary. So when you are a district, the higher your poverty, the more your report card, the more points on your report card are towards growth. So you could have students achieving at a high level, but you're not necessarily getting as many points on the report card for that because we're a district with higher poverty. So a district with lower poverty is going to be measured more on just achievement. So again, we want all students to grow, and that's important, but the large portion of our report card is based on growth. The target group is another new group they added this year, and it's almost a mini report card within a larger report card. And the mini report card measures in the target group, your top 25% students that are performing below the standards. So your lowest performing 25%. And they're looking at where is that group growing in comparison to other lowest 25% across the state. And then the last one is that on track to graduation. So that looks at chronic absenteeism, attendance, third grade reading, and eighth grade math. And using all of those components gives you a score for on track to graduation. So these are all the pieces that have to come into play as they look at what are your results on a state accountability report card. So we can say that we, as we look at those results, you know, we can, we can say, here's why, we know, we know COVID, we know kids weren't in school every day. So that, that is true, but that doesn't mean that we just say that's the excuse. It can't be the excuse. We have to figure out what are we going to do? And so what are those steps? So as we think about what are those next steps at elementary, one of the specific things that we're doing at the elementary level is we're really targeting new literacy assessments focused around phonics in grades K2. So as I did an analysis of what we're using for phonics and phonemic awareness, we had some inconsistent assessments being used across the district. So we all moved to one assessment that measured eight standard skills in phonics. And so that's being used across the district K2. We adopted a new math series that is more aligned to our state standards, and we're in the process of adopting a new reading series for 2023. We've put in place new literacy interventions at K8 in reading and math that teachers are trained on in August. We're in phase two of our early literacy initiative and looking at hiring a new early literacy specialist. In 2023, Superintendent Pufal and I have been working on a tutoring program for K2 through the American, Amera Reading Corps. And then continued trainings that we did with our intervention resources in, in August as well. So those are some of those steps. So this is an example of what all K2 teachers are doing in the district. They have their students, they have the eight phonics skills, and this is looking at what of our students are on track, which ones are progressing, and which ones need more support. So as a teacher, I can look at that first column and say, majority of my students are on track. So I have three or four, though, that I need to maybe work with in a small group and really target that skill so that they're then where the rest of the classroom is at. And as I look at the rest of the skills, there's not a lot of consistency. So those are skills I know I need to progressively focus on with my students throughout the year so that I continue to see more green as we help students move forward in their phonics and phonemic awareness skills. Because we know that's the one indicator that really tells us whether a student will be on track to, to read at grade level by third grade. So it's critical that we have this data and information. We also know that, I shared with you previously, with our new math curriculum, we already started to see some significant growth. So highlighted in the yellow in the bottom right-hand corner there is really that increased growth that we saw in just one year through the implementation of a new resource that was aligned to those standards that are aligned to that state assessment that we use. So also, as we talk about and think about, why is it important to really put in place that resource adoption cycle that ensures that our students have a curriculum aligned to the standards that they're assessed on? It's very important, and that's how we know we're going to help move student achievement forward. So this is a brief example of our new Bridges curriculum. We want it to be hands-on. You can see kids working with manipulatives. We want them to conceptually understand math. We also know that they need the procedural. Some of those problems look like what you and I are used to seeing in math. And that's okay, we need a balance. They need to know how to solve a real world problem, how to do traditional math, and how to conceptually understand it. And so this student is a third grader, but you know, they're asked if they're digging worms in the backyard is their problem, and they have to measure the length, how are they going to put it into a table and onto a number line using fractions to measure growth? So when I look at an example of what's on the state assessment that's aligned to our standards in our curriculum, that's a forward example asking the kids to do the same thing. So we want to better prepare our students moving forward in how they perform on the state assessment, but also to help them really become more college and career ready. So these are some of the additional steps that I just mentioned that we've put in place to say, here's what we're doing. We recognize there are, some of the results are not where we want them to be, so what action steps are we taking? I also added the last one, and part of that has been with the ESSR funds where we've used those to reduce class size in our elementary classrooms to keep numbers lower so that teachers can have more support for some of those students that are struggling. We know as a result of our students having, you know, when they first came back after COVID in the spring, we saw about a 25% learning loss when we looked at our fall assessments. We thought we would see less this year, but we brought those 30% back also that had been in a different instructional model. So we really didn't, we saw still about a 20% loss from where we typically are in the fall every year. So we still have gaps that we really need to, to focus on as a result of that data that we're continuing to see. So also, that's what we're focusing on at elementary. So what are we focusing on at secondary and how are we using those new curriculum resources to help move our students forward? So we know college and career readiness, these are key things that matter as we look at secondary. So what are the, some of those things in place at the secondary level? So we've had new resources in high school English last year that are better aligned to our state assessments, new math resources this year, new biology, and new AP resources. So just to share an example, we shared this example at PPC. So how are we better preparing our kids to standards-aligned curriculum and to be prepared for our assessments? This is our new, out of our new biology resource that we adopted. So it's actually getting kids more college and career ready. The students had to look at a case study of a child that lived out in Arizona that had an antibiotic resistance to a bacteria. So they had to look at cultures. They had to create an infographic, and that's a student infographic on how that, the antibiotic impacted the bacteria. And then they had to create tables and graphs showing what would be the dosage of antibiotic they need in order to, as a result, in order to remove the bacteria. In math, this is about, again, high school, we have the traditional problems, but this is using square root and quadratic equation to determine if here's a parcel of land that we're going to develop a recreation area, how are we going to use the quadratic equation to solve that problem? So for many of us in math, we were always, I was, why did I have to know the quadratic equation? What am I ever going to do with that? Well, they can see, if I'm going to go develop land, now I have a purpose for it. And it's a real, you know, a real world example. And then in middle school, the same thing, another real world example of if I'm at amusement park and I want to know the pace of a ride, how am I going to, to chart that as well in datas and tables? So I show you those examples to show they mirror the same as in forward. So this is a case study in a forward example in science. It's a, it's a case study of a scientist studying a stream to understand why the trout population is decreasing and how am I going to put that into tables and population is decreasing, and how am I going to put that into tables and graphs, similar to what our students are learning with their new resources. And the same with some of our math, again, how are we taking that real-world problem and putting it into charts and graphs so we're better preparing our students for college and career as well as our state assessments? We know that we're also continuing to focus on dual credit, 20 dual credit, 12 advanced standing, and continuing to look at how we can build work-based learning into our pathways. We've used ESSR funds to support math and English classes. So when we talk about how we use that ESSR fund, so for example, one of our high schools, we looked at kind of a little bit of a, a case study, so, and we found that it was impactful. So in a math classroom, we had two math classrooms that both had students that were in need of intervention. One of the classrooms had two math teachers teaching the class together, so two content specialists. The other class did not, had their one math teacher. But they found the students that were struggling that had two math teachers in there made significantly more gains than the students without the two teachers. So because of those results, we determined, and you know, working with this team here, that that was, you know, how ESSR could continue to use to help support the, the gap for some of our students that need to continue to increase in their achievement. So as well as we, we look at that on the intervention side, but what are we doing again on the enrichment side? So you can see all of the new AP resources that we've also been implementing, as well as putting in a system for AP training. So AP courses are all aligned to the College Board, so we know that they're standards that are aligned to what students will be experiencing at the college level. So each year now, we have a rotation at each high school where teachers can go to a week-long AP training. So they, they are trained on these new resources as well, which is really important, and they get to work with other like peers that are using these same types of resources. So these are really key things, again, that we're trying to do when we look at those results and we say, we need to, you know, we need to think about continuous improvement. What are we going to do? Which brings me back circling to why do we need this resource adoption cycle? So now that I've kind of taken you through state accountability, where our results are, knowing that they're, they're not at the place where we want them to be. And so when we look at this timeline, you can see that in 2010, the national and Wisconsin state academic standards were implemented. And so when those were implemented, then you started having companies start to say, well, I'm going to create resources that are aligned to these standards. Well, the first two years, I would say they were reference the standards, but they didn't really teach the standards very deeply. So as we moved forward in, you know, the new standards, by 14, 15, the Wisconsin Student Assessment System switched to the new Wisconsin standards. So now we have the new Wisconsin standards, but that's where we started to decline in how often we are adopting resources. And so our resource adoption cycle slowed for many other, for many reasons and different choices that had to be made in the district at different times. But what we saw then is we had a state test that assessed new standards, but resources that were 10, 15, 20 years old. So how are we expecting our students to perform on an assessment when those resources are not aligned with what they're assessed on? So it's really important that this cycle is in place so that we don't get ourselves in a place again where we're 10, 15, 20 years behind in certain core content areas. So after doing that audit, figuring out what we needed to target in resources, we began that process. And so how did we begin that process? We went to training, myself and some other colleagues at the state level called Quality Matters, which is how does a district adopt high-quality instructional resources aligned to the standards? So that was a year-long training that we attended on and off throughout the year. DPI also implemented a seven-year standards review. So every seven years, they're reviewing their standards and making adjustments. So we have to be focused on that as well. So the, what we want to share with you is that looking at a six-year resource adoption cycle, where maybe it wouldn't be new every six years, but we at least have to review where they're at and are they still aligning with the standards? The reason we say six instead of seven to exactly align with the state is the vendor contracts are six years. So, and especially with digital resources, you can lose digital access. So we really have to continue to stay on that six-year cycle, say, are they still aligned with the standards, or do we need to look at another resource? So how are we doing in comparison to the state? So we said, some of our state assessment results are not where we want them to be. So working with Mr. McCray as well, we looked at how are we performing against other like districts with similar poverty in what we're spending per student on curriculum resources? So you can see where we fall in comparison. In 2020, we were one of the lowest districts, and that was where, with having started to implement new resources. Some of them that I just shared with you would be on the 2021 year. But so in comparison to those across the state, we are close to the bottom there with, with our like peers. So as we think about that, what does that mean? We need to invest in our students, and we need to invest in our resources. And so when you look at, we saw the impact from Bridges curriculum in math. We saw quickly over one year, when we had a resource that was aligned to the standards, our students quickly were able to better access those standards and start to show growth. So we come back to this slide. If we look at one of those top-performing districts as Wausau, who has a similar poverty but is outperforming us on the state accountability report card, over five years, their average was $107 per student on curricular resources. Janesville's over those same five years was $56. So we haven't consistently invested in our resources to consistently support the needs of our teachers in the classroom and to consistently provide our students equitable access to resources that are aligned to the state assessment and to the standards that they're expected to know and be able to do to be college and career-ready. So as we think about implementing a six-year cycle into our instructional resources and that financial investment, we're here as a school district because we're here for our students and for student achievement. And so as we invest, it's really important that we invest in this cycle so that our students are as ready as they can be when they walk out the door. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This, this is really necessary work. It is incredibly important work. Thank you. Does anybody have, this is not an action item, this is discussion, so you may have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Murray?
Thank you. Wonderful work that you and your staff does. I just have a question out of curiosity. When we say we use ESSR funds to address classroom size, I mean, I know what that means, but can you give me a specific example, like, can you pick a school? And I know some schools, I mean, if you reduce class size, you have to have, physically have to have another classroom.
Correct.
Or another class to go to. So can somebody give me example, a particular school, how we're reducing class size?
Sure. And do you want to, go ahead, Scott?
Go ahead if you want. There's several that--
Doing a little singing tonight. There are several schools that, that we did use. We looked at the TPR, and honestly, I know we looked at Adams, for example, Van Buren was another one that we looked at, in particular with kindergarten and first grade. Kennedy was another school that we added another section. And so what I do is we look at the TPR based on the number of students enrolled in that particular grade level. We look at our number of sections. So it could be two or three teachers, right? If it's two, is it on the verge? And this year, yeah, if it were, if it were close, we added a third teacher. Normally, we'd kind of wait. We didn't wait this time. We added that third section, which does impact classrooms. So you have to talk to the principal to see, do we actually have logistically, do we have the rooms ready? Do we have a schedule ready? Because that'll impact specials as well. And so it's, it is a process, but we, that's how it does reduce the TPR in the classroom.
Can you, for example, that particular school, can you tell me what the TPR is? You know, is it 12? Is it 15?
No, it, the average TPR is probably right around 18 right now in first and kindergarten. There's a few, the over-under, obviously.
Sure, sure.
Different places.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray. Anybody else? Questions? Yes, Commissioner Dahmerhausen.
Now, I want to see if I drew out the right thing. As I look through all these graphs and facts and that, one of the things, and it's not just here, it's elsewhere, is poverty. Poverty is a big driver of our results. And somehow, and I, I go back to the statement that the community, it takes a community to educate a child. It means invest the money in the children if you want results. And that's getting harder to harder, harder and harder to do because of the fact that we have smaller families today. Not as many of our community members are invested in the schools because they have no child in it anymore, or grandchild even. Doesn't mean they're being neglectful or anything else. But I think we need to solve some of the poverty that happens in the community and then find a way to get more money. I hate to say it, but money is a solution where we can have more instructors if we can get them and step up our efforts in that manner. So I think it's a long-term problem we have, and I love what you're doing here. This, this really brings it out. And I know we're trying our darndest, our teachers are fantastic, and our aides are, but somehow, it isn't just us, it's the rest of the community that has to step up. And I'm hoping that we hear more of that in the future. So thank you very much for what you've done and what you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Okay, Commissioner Paul?
I have no questions. I just, you know, this is really important to me. I am so grateful for the work that you're doing. Some of these things I've been aware of as an involved parent, but I've been seeing taking place in elementary level and also the high school level. But I, it was very eye-opening, and so I just want you to know that this is such important work, and it will have a big impact for our district because we can't fix what we aren't being really clear about where, where our holes are. So thank you, I, I truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Audrey?
Well, I think you said it perfect right there. You can't fix what, in essence, you don't know. And, you know, I look here and I look at Commissioner Mary, Commissioner Dahmerhausen, myself, and much of what's shown here, we didn't see it. We did not see it. So when, you know, you look at the impact and, you know, I would say while I'm here, it is directly for the students, but we didn't see it. So, and I say it that way because as we go forward, it becomes the key work of really what the school boards are for. We didn't know what we didn't know, but now we know some more questions to ask. So hopefully going forward, we don't get behind. So I'm going, my son went through, because this whole period of time, he's going through the school district, and the teachers were doing their best with one arm, I'm sorry, two arms tied behind their back. And so I say thank you for the level of clarity and of information. So now it gives us something to work with. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you very, very much. Awesome. Okay, so new high school course proposals. Mr. Menenwalt. Menenwalt. I'm sorry. Mend-- Mendenwalt. Mendenwalt.
Good evening. Chris works. Chris works. It does. And I did change my batteries in my smoke detector, 2018, so I had not been doing that very well, but I got it done. So I'm going to go through some new courses. You have a, a board memorandum on it as well, and, and I'll mirror pretty much what's in there in the presentation. So just so you understand the process, we're a few months away for teachers to begin considering new courses, right, for what is nearly two years from now. Right? So, so that's how, how soon the process really starts, and it's, it, it really is guided by, by how we have to schedule, right? How we have to get information to parents. So they'll start that process already in February for some people who really get after it. They'll meet with curricular teams and curricular committees in the spring and summer and getting into, to the fall of, of the year. Then in October, on this year, it was October 15th was our deadline. They're reviewed by the high school instructional team with district coordinators and looks at, at new course proposals and where they fit. If they're approved by that committee, they go to the superintendent advisory council and are reviewed there. If they are passed by that committee, then they come to you, and that's what I'm, I'm bringing to you here. So it, it, it all takes a while, and there's a lot of eyes that, that, that get to see this before it gets to, to this point. So just some informational things, just so you're aware, for those of you that were at PPC, you heard a little bit about new math and new science curriculum. So math, starting next year, will, will, will be a traditional algebra, geometry, algebra format, right? And just what it's, what it sounds like, the last, I guess I can't say how many years, but we've been integrated one, two, and three. So that will be some nomenclature changing that happens there. And then one of the things that's in your memorandum is, is some non-TC options for, for some classes. Not every class, but some classes. That was done somewhat strategically. We want to make sure that students still have their option to take transcripted credit courses through the school district. Mr. Pufal is fond of saying that's the gold standard, and he's correct when he says that as far as being able to take courses in high school and get college credit. However, that's, we have pigeonholed some of our courses to being that's the only option, and that's not the best option for every student. So we, we just have some of those courses that will now be an option for students to have that are non-transcripted to do. And there's eight new courses. I'll go through real briefly. Here's the first four. The Art of Science and Plants is really about, I guess an easiest way to put that would be Urban Landscape. It is, is a name. The Finance Economics and Law of Social Justice is a little bit of a, a business history course, looking at historically marginalized groups and the finance economics and law and, and the history of that in the U.S. and beyond. Athletic Performance and Training is a new course in FIAD, really geared towards our athletes so that when there's athletes in there, and, and I'll just take the, the fall sports season, if you have some cross-country athletes in there, and you might have some swimmers in there, and you might have some football players in there, we'd like to be able to give them different workouts because they need different workouts for their sports, right? It needs to be customized. So it's really a, a, a strength in athletic and performance and training, but, but allows us to do some individualization and really target some of our athletes. Strength Agility and Conditioning 2 is just a continuation. It allows us for, for those students who are familiar with Strength Agility and Conditioning 1, understand the safety procedures really well in the, in the weight room and, and understand the, the lifts and moves we ask them to do. It just allows us to advance a little faster with, with those, with those groups. Next four is an Abbott elective, and you'll get more information at PPC on what Abbott is, but Abbott elective is a course we're going to offer for our freshmen at Craig and Parker next year. It's going to take a, a substantial amount of training for some of our, our staff at both schools, really geared towards students who are, would be first-time post-secondary students, really geared towards some students who maybe hadn't considered that they would be able to be successful in high school and beyond, and, and teaching them specific school skills to become more successful students. But I'll give a much longer presentation on that later on. Writing Through Films is exactly what it sounds like. It's a very common high school course in, as an English elective. Health, Safety, Nutrition, and Infant and Toddler Development are, you've heard us talk about pathways and how we're, we're trying to redevelop some of our pathways. This is an area in family and consumer science where we are redeveloping a pathway and removing some courses that we don't feel lead to career readiness and inserting some courses like Health, Safety, Nutrition, and Infant and Toddler Development that do directly lead to student skills and career development. So those are, those are the courses we are, are proposing. So those are, those are the courses we are proposing, those eight.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Murray and a second from Commissioner Audrey. Any discussion or questions? Commissioner Audrey?
Just a quick question. I know often, well, and I've seen a few of the new course requests and things, but they were really tied to the individual teacher that had interest in them. And as I think of that, so what happens if a teacher's courted? Great opportunity to go somewhere else, change in family, then what happens to these particular courses?
It's a fair question, and sometimes, Commissioner, I'll tell you that the course kind of dies.
Okay.
That does happen sometimes, you're not gonna, and sometimes not, right? Sometimes there's other people in the department who say, yes, we'd like to keep that. Sometimes what happens is, you know, it's driven by student request, so if the students continue to request it, well, it's our job to find somebody to teach it.
Sure.
Right? But at times, you know, for me, this was a while ago, when I think back to high school, I didn't always take classes because of the course. I sometimes took classes because of the instructor. The instructor leaves sometimes, no matter how good the course sounded.
Which sort of is, I mean, that really leads to, and maybe, well, we'll get into this later on, potentially, but I was thinking as, to what level, because it kind of looked at the process we go through, teacher, department, and then, as we look at our existing course offerings and particular teachers that may have taught these classes over the years and really would be a level of, maybe expert isn't the right word, but that's the word that comes to mind.
Probably the right word.
Then, to what level are we looking at the whole succession planning? And I know that isn't directly new course, so just bear with me a little bit. But I just think when we're adding new courses, I also think about the legacy courses that have been good courses that students are interested in, but they are maybe a particular niche. So what are we doing in anything to address that?
I think part of how we're addressing some of your questions, Greg, are some of the work that we are, unfortunately, slowly is, slowly working on pathways and looking at, how can we make sure that the courses we're offering lead to something bigger? Maybe it's post-secondary, maybe it's career readiness, maybe it's skills that incorporate both of those. It's just taking us a little longer to do that work than we'd like. And I think that will help a little bit because it may narrow some of our course offerings or hopefully, what it does, it may narrow it, but always will focus it so that we're offering the right courses that lead to something that, when they leave. But is it always going to answer that? No, and I'll be upfront, I'm not sure that we always consider your second question when we're having those conversations, but we certainly get.
That is why I asked. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Commissioner Henowal?
Chris, you said it's about a two-year process, correct? So, and you mentioned student interests, but if you're looking at student interest, you know, the juniors and seniors that are saying, geez, I'd love to take, I'd love to have something that aligns with the fact that I'm out for track, you know, so, boy, the strength agility, blah, blah, blah. By the time this rolls around, they're two years graduated, how does it, how does a two-year process fit with the students that are coming up? You know, is there a process that you're getting feedback from those students that might be interested in courses like this, or do you follow what I'm asking?
Yeah, I do, and it's not something we're asking eighth graders right now, what do you think you're gonna want to take as a senior? It's more, so part of the reason it takes so long to do this is once these are approved, we'll start working on making all the changes that need to go into a course guide so that it can be translated, published, get in the hands of families so that they can make choices, because we need to start creating a schedule for next fall, right, in February. Right? So that's kind of the timeline of why it happens that way. It's not because, I mean, it would be great if we could do some things and pop some courses off in May, it just wouldn't work in, unfortunately, how we have to build a schedule for, you know, nearly 3,000 students.
All right, so we have a motion. Sorry, so we have a motion and a second for approval. Hearing no more discussion, I'm gonna call a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next is a presentation and consider approval of change in the retirement notification deadlines for staff.
Yes, so we are, we are here again to have a conversation a little bit. You all received the memo. We have two opportunities for certified staff to declare that they are going to retire. The first one is November 1st for a January 15th retirement, and then February 1st for an end-of-school-year retirement. At this point, this language has been in the handbook and was carried over from JEA contracts back in 2013 when they made the switch between contracts and the handbook. So basically, that was a time when, you're right, there were 100 to 300 candidates for any given position at any given moment, and that language, you know, reflected that. At this point in time, we still have unfilled positions in the school district of Janesville due to the lack of applicants. That leaves students with substitute teachers, uncertified staff, in a not-optimal learning environment for them. So we are asking that we remove the opportunity or the November 1st declaration and retirement at semester for the 22-23 school year. Do have just a couple of facts for you in regard to where we're at currently. We have four teachers, four paraprofessionals, and four other staff who since October 15th have submitted and/or retired already. So as we go into these next months and we start to look at trying to fill paraprofessional positions that are full-time positions, and we look at staff positions that could be hard to fill, yes, we have December graduates, but our understanding right now from those universities, area universities, is that they're not nearly as high numbers as what we've had in the past. And just based on our own experience in HR, we are certainly seeing that very few applicants are out there, and the principals could attest to that. It's a difficult position for the district and the students to face as far as continued learning and process to have a mid-year retirement. So we do ask that you consider the approval of eliminating this for the next school year.
Okay, I see a motion from Commissioner Hayworth. Do I have a second? So it looks like the motion fails for like a second. Okay, so I guess the issue, we'll just have to let it go.
Keep it on. There you go.
So what exactly was the motion?
So the motion was to approve the change in the retirement notification deadlines. Am I correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
To eliminate the November 1st notification for the opportunity for a mid-year retirement for certified staff.
Right. Thank you for clarifying.
Is that the only, I'm sorry, if I'm out of line here, but, because the way the memo is written.
Your mind.
The way the memo is written, it had other dates in there, so I wanted to be certain one way or the other, because I see the February date, and was that any bearing on the motion? Or is it just the November one?
Just the November 1st.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hayworth.
I was just gonna say, it's not, yeah, just removal of the November 1st, and my thought process on it is, it's the disruption to the students, so that pulls at me when you've gotta find a sub and they're not, or they're not being taught by a certified staff. So I would just like to keep, I think for the students' learning, keeping the same teacher is the best.
So, but we don't have a motion. I mean, we had a motion, but we don't have a second, or we didn't have a second. So some guidance, Attorney Ulrich. It just...
There's been additional discussion and clarification if someone wanted to renew the motion. I don't think that that would be prohibited. You certainly could attempt to make that motion again, maybe someone other than Mr. Hayworth, and she didn't get a second, that's an upset, but I think there's still an opportunity for motion now to introduce additional, but...
Thank you.
Oh, we can do it now.
Well, right now is really what we're thinking.
It should be appropriate.
Yeah. Any motions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't think that's ever happened since I was... Yes?
Yeah, I just want to bring up a little statement there.
It's over. It's over, Carl. So there's...
I'll talk to her separate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's probably best. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay.
You.
All right. So we are here at the discussion approval of revised school calendar. Mr. Burner?
Good evening, everyone. With the blessing of PPC, we brought to you forward calendars that we'd like the board to approve. You saw me in January of this year, which seems like eons ago, asking you for approval of a different set of calendars. But as we know, the last couple of years have caused us to reflect over and over again about what our practices and what our structures are. And we found, in talking with Dr. DeGraff and Chris, that we put our brains together and said our, our structure simply just didn't fit the needs for our kids, for our staff to meet our promises. And we tried something new, gosh, was it four or five years ago, by front-loading our PD early in August. We've tried that, it worked for a couple of years. What we're finding is it no longer meets our needs as a district, for our staff in terms of our PLC groups that we want our staff to work on, our adoption cycles, and our training in particular for those different cycles that we adopt. We need touchpoints throughout the year. So the calendar that you see has staff returning to work in August later, a week later. They're leaving roughly the same time, but we've allowed touchpoints throughout the year that are consistent. So before, we had high school having, or, I'm sorry, secondary having a day off, and then elementary having a different day off, and that's not, that's not user-friendly for our community either. So what we're looking at doing is combining those dates and flip-flopping the PD versus workday for our elementary schools and our secondary schools. We do believe that this calendar, these calendars really do meet the needs of our district, and hope that you would approve that for us tonight.
I have a motion to approve. Okay, I heard Commissioner Murray and then Commissioner Millard. And the second discussion. Commissioner Hayworth?
Can you tell me the net, just from a parent perspective, of what days they're gonna have to find alternate childcare? It looks like seven PD days in the...
Yeah, so the green days on the calendar, I don't know if you have the color copy.
Yep, I do.
Those are the days that they would need to find some sort of...
Chuck. And so that's seven of them, and then this, with the current schedule, that already has some in there, so there's already, there's one, two, I'm looking at this year's schedule, three, four, five. So essentially, from a parent perspective, we've added two more days where you gotta figure out. Thank you.
And one of the nice parts about this calendar, though, is it combines the secondary and elementary, so perhaps we have an older sibling that...
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. Because, well, right, but we're still keeping elementary at trimesters and high school and middle. Okay. Yeah, no, that's helpful, yeah, because I, I have one kid home next Friday, or two Fridays, and then one kid going, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, other discussion. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the calendar as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Consider approval of resolution authorizing taxable tax and revenue application promissory note. This is a mouthful, so...
So moved.
Wow, that was fast. Okay, so we have a motion to accept from Commissioner Audrey, Audrey, and a second from Commissioner Millard. Mr. McCray, do you want to, do we need, do you guys want to just ask questions? Do you want to? Commissioner Audrey?
Oh, no, I go...
Oh, you want to hear the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, all right. You're on.
Okay, so included in your board packet certainly is a memo kind of outlining essentially the rationale for a line of credit. Now, keep in mind, a line of credit is different than, let's say, some districts who go and say, we need $3 million, we take the entire $3 million, and we go through a lot of paperwork, and then we use that as part of our cash flow. A line of credit for us is not as complex, right? And so essentially, we would tap a line of credit when needed. November is a very low point for not only our district, but many districts in the state of Wisconsin. Some districts, the district I came from, for example, had an extremely high fund balance, excuse me. So it was a very tiny budget, right, $15 million, but they had nearly a $4 million fund balance, right? So Clinton Community School District never needed a line of credit, never needed, if you will, a large bulk loan. Okay, so we have a fairly decent fund balance, but November is very tough for us. So keep in mind, as I outlined in the memos, this is really a backstop because we get really close. So in 2019, my first year here, we had under $1 million in cash, right? And that gets a little tight in November prior to the December aid payment, right? So then last year, we tapped about $1 million of a $3 million line of credit, and we had about a million and a half. So we had it to essentially avoid any last-minute rush, right, to cash. So this year, right, depending upon, if you will, how certain things fall within our expenditures as well as our revenues, we have this as a backstop. Last year, we used it for 20 days. This year, it would be about the same length of time should we need to employ that. There is no cost if we employ the line of credit. There obviously is an interest cost, right? About $1,500 is outlined in your packet if we needed to employ that.
Questions?
Hi, Dan.
Hi.
Thank you for all your hard work on the budget, and the way you explain things is great work. I really appreciate the time you spend with me.
Sure.
First of all, my fellow commissioners to my right, when they told me last meeting that it's common business practice, I didn't believe them. Well, I did some of my own research, and it is. You know, it's hard, it is, so I was wrong, but nonetheless, you know, we have a Fund 10 policy, and it sits and states in here, the purpose of the unassigned portion of the general Fund 10 balance is to avoid cash flow borrowing.
Sure.
So, and, you know, you know, sometimes it's good that I've been here a long time, sometimes it's not so good because we have new things, and it's like, I don't think I liked that right away, you know? But what I'm, and I'm gonna support this, because it seems like eight days, we might need some money, and you're gonna pay it back, and it's gonna cost us $1,500 or something, because we have to pay our bills.
Correct.
Evidently, what I've been learning the last few days is, in the past, before you, we weren't paying our bills on time. So we were kind of shell-gaming the money. So that's new for me, my new concept too, and that's not, that's not a good practice for anybody. So anyway, but I do have an agenda item that I'm looking for a board support to explore our Fund 10 balance policy, because right now, it's from 17 to 23.
Right.
You know, and you gave me a little bit, what if we move it to 18? Would that solve the problem itself? Or what are those implications? Or do we even need a Fund 10 balance anymore if we're just gonna, you know, and how is the Fund 10 balance funded? You know, and all these different things that I, I guess that's, I guess I'd like the Finance Committee to explore those things, so I'm looking for some support for that. So thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
The agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments, or Commissioner Dahmerhausen?
Yeah, I along with Greg.
Yeah, I, along with Greg, were on this way back, and we did have a healthier Fund 10 balance, almost to be obscene at one time, but we kept, with Act 10, we rather, anything, we reduced it down, what we would do, which freed up money to pay for expenses in the manner that Act 10 worked. I remember doing that. And we ended up pretty good, but Act 10 changed the whole game, and we had to learn a lot about it at that time. I think I'm pretty correct on that, Greg. But we did have to do it, and of course, a couple of board members pushed that we shouldn't even have a Fund 10 almost balance, it should be, so, we did do it, and that, but a Fund 10 balance is important, because for 90% or more of the year, it's very healthy, it takes care of itself, and one of the things that happens is, the state of Wisconsin has been very slow at certain payments, they've slowed down when they pay, and that. I think we were paid much sooner, like 30 days more, and sometimes, and I think in the January payment was slowed down, the June payment, and now they've restored part of it. It's a political football, but it's a fact, we have to do this, because of the law, and the needs, and to pay people on time. Just as I do work, I want to be paid on time, just as everyone here does work, they want to be paid on time, and they want to feel comfortable that they are. So our district is doing something we hadn't looked at, because bonding companies looked at it so negative, if we borrowed money, even in short-term. Today, that has dropped away, because it's the environment. So I'm real happy to see you moving forward with this. I'll have a question later on it, and that, and maybe we can discuss it, or maybe I won't even bring it up, and I'll talk to you privately on it. It might be better, I don't want to start a war, so.
Sure, yeah, no, I don't believe you would. So just real quick, before the board's action, so I appreciate Commissioner Audrey's leadership, as well as former and current Finance Committee individuals, because what we've tried to do at Finance, right, is kind of take some topics and chew on them for a little bit to go into some greater detail. So fund balance policy, to Commissioner Murray's point, right, is not one of those topics we've really taken a look at in detail. So it's a very fair request, and something we'll go ahead and do, right, because Commissioner Audrey mentioned earlier, right, clarity is a point where we want to get to, and that's very fair, and certainly something that is my philosophical position as well.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Sure.
So, much like the curriculum adoption cycle, once again, we didn't know what was being done behind the scenes. Even as the board treasurer, I heard comments, but I didn't know that meant this bill will sit on my desk for two weeks before we pay. That's literally what happened, and once we know, then, well, then I say now we're taking different actions. Short-term borrowing is still an issue, but in the methodology in which we're using it, under a line of credit, is looked upon much different than going out and establishing a short-term loan. So it is considered much, much different. So I just wanted to make sure that I once again said, currently, under the leadership of Superintendent Prouffal, the directors, we're seeing more things that we simply did not know. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so this is, oh, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, is there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thanks for, thanks for keeping an eye out for me. Okay, so I don't see any further discussion. This is an action item, we have a motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, PPC report. Commissioner Hayworth?
It was riveting, Mr. Audrey.
I just want everybody to remember that I'm the one that started the adjectives, okay?
I was actually going to say it was very resourceful, is the adjective that I had already prepared for this evening. We had a presentation on the new high school resource adoption for math and science, so thank you to Dr. DeGraff and her co-p presenters, Tanya, Stephanie, and Crystal, for taking the time to present to us. Envision AG is a 9th through 12th grade math, now used by Craig Parker, Rock University, and Tagos. And it includes not only a digital component, but also books, actual textbooks that are updated. So this gets to the, this was chosen because it gets to the why, and connects to real-life examples, as she showed a little bit earlier. It's also a natural progression from bridges that they have in elementary. And then for science, Inquiry Hub, or IHUB, was chosen, along with Camp Bell's program for AP science. These allow students to do more of the model building, and allows for real-world and real-time research and study. Learning walks are done for math by the administration to support the teachers and the implementation. I did ask for it to be done for science as well. The assessments model, as she, as Dr. DeGraff also pointed out earlier, model the ACTs, so we're doing more to get the students ready. The calendar update was passed through, like Mr. Garner said. And then lastly, as a staffing update, I've asked Mr. Garner to bring us monthly our numbers, and as of 11/1, we did show a decrease in unfilled positions, and in addition, he mentioned we will see teachers spike in January postings due to retirements. Our next meeting is May 24th, where we're going to cover more Neolas, we'll get an update on the high school pathways. Chris is going to cover Avid Forest, and about how this can work as a study program for in-person learners, and there's parent resources along with that, and then we'll get our month, our staffing update from Mr. Garner. Any questions, or anything I missed, Lisa or Liz?
Thank you very, very much. Okay, Benefits Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennawall and Commissioner Dummerhausen was there with me for this meeting. So was our consultant from Cunningham and Butler, and HR staff, and the superintendent. Just a brief overview, our third year with MetLife, our dental provider is up, so our consultant is doing best practice by going out and seeing what else is out there, and what might work best. Could be MetLife, it could be something else, it could be self-funded, but they're looking at all those options for a new dental plan. Again, hats off to HR and our finance department. We're within a few thousand dollars of actual budget of our healthcare, and the reason it fluctuates is because of membership changes from hiring, not hiring, retirement. So they're doing a wonderful job. We can expect, again, close to 9% potential increase for healthcare for the next budget year. And then last, we took care of a few things. Tina Johnson gave us a comprehensive report on well-being plan in the district, providing our employees with all sorts of options for physical health, yoga, walking, cooking, coping mechanisms for stress, anxiety, and fatigue, and on and on and on, and they engage with our employees regularly about what their needs are, what are some options they'd like to explore to stay physically and mentally healthy in our district, and ultimately for our children. There's a survey that went out, if you want to really know more in-depth about what that was, the questions were asked, we can share that with you, again, just about what the employees envision they would like to see moving forward for their wellness. And another real foresight thing that they shared with us, that because of what all our staff goes through with COVID, kids coming back, brand-new in a classroom, face-to-face, shortages of substitutes, lack of prep periods, on and on, we've canceled a PD session, or did we do two, canceled two, one at each level? To give our employees some time to prep and regenerate themselves, so I thought that was a real progressive move. So that's, and we don't have another meeting scheduled, because we don't really have anything to talk about until consultant does their work. So you should be on the Benefits Committee. Tina?
Okay.
How was that, all right, or we, did you? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, summary of board requests, I do have a couple, and I'll be sending those out to committees, okay? And we'll get those on the agenda as well, and then future meetings, dates, and times. So, Ms. Johnson?
Our next upcoming meeting is the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting on Tuesday, November 16th, at 4:00 PM, here at the Educational Services Center. The next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 14th, at 6:00 PM, here at the Educational Services Center. And there is a special Board of Education meeting in closed session that will either be held on December 1st or 2nd. We are waiting for guidance from our board president on that.
And you will get it very, very, very soon, maybe even before I go home. Okay, all right, well, we have reached the end of our agenda. Thank you all very much.